Please say yes, leave the flag.
Justice.
Thank you, welcome to our meeting. So next in the agenda is the approval of the minutes of May seventeenth.
Where is it? There's an I missing in Lori's name. The I missing in Lori's name. And one sent me an email, let me know. Oh, that, there were that correction.
I make motion we approve the minutes of May seventeenth with the correction of the I in Lori's name.
Second. That was a motion by Chris, second by Joe to approve the minutes. May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three with the correction. The spelling of Lori Walker's name, all those. Next is department reports.
I'm gonna be. Fire chief. Yeah. Uh, this is, this is from the fire chief. Memorial Day breakfast went well with two hundred people attending. Grade went well too. Department will be presenting his scholarship next Wednesday evening. On the academy. And he had to replace several batteries on the two thousand sixteen apparatus. Each truck has six. Now, police chief, we had three hundred and ninety-six calls from service, traffic stops in the month of April. One arrest for traffic violation, one arrest on a warrant, one arrest on for terrorizing. On May twenty-third and twenty-fourth. We conducted our annual firearm qualification. With our new Glock nine millimeter platforms, all of us qualified with the new nine millimeters and the new AR fifteens. I'd like to thank all of you for your assistance to making these new weapons available to the officers. It's so much better knowing that you're carrying safe for more reliable weapons. Community Night Out is being held on August first, two thousand twenty-three at eighteen hundred hours at the police station. Please invite friends to attend this community event. I'd like to thank Dawn Shaw for the hard work she has already put into the planning of this event, signing the chief's file. I have excluded, also in here is the road enforcement monthly report. I put in front of you, you have lots of paper in front of you tonight, but not that too exactible. And then I put the, um, July one, twenty-two through April twenty. Um, expenditure report, so you can see where we are with the budgets. You'll notice that the, you know, the biggest concerns are gonna be public works and the trend and the. Mostly public works at this point, but we'll see with the. Asper station and summer except in the. Over this next month or two, when the summer people start coming, the amount of stuff that lives in here increases. Me. Signed the contract with. Department of Conservation Act, or maybe it's the EP for the, for the string crossing grant, so that's all set. Reagan wanted me to let you know that the public hearing for the, the recommended tip changes is gonna be held. In twelve thousand nine, in the town office. Um, we've already posted that you can submit comments, um. At time, so choose. And, um. Uh, if you have any questions.
What does the public hearing, the tip changes?
It's, it's a state requirement that you, you hold a public hearing, um. It has to be noticed ten days ahead of time. It would have been for this meeting, but, um. She just forgot about it. She missed the deadline to get it for this meeting here, so.
And that can be done independent of the vote?
Yes, okay, yeah. It has to be done. It doesn't have to, it has to be done prior to the vote. So she's, she's, she's trying to hit the ten day window and then. No, that's not, that's not true. We have to hold a public hearing before we submit the adopted thing to the state. It's one of the checkboxes on the, on the application when they go to amend it. There we go. I gotta write that, okay.
At what time on the twelfth?
I don't expect there'll be.
Fine if there is.
Absolutely.
What was the street crossing grant?
That's for the. Uh, the new box culvert near the campground. So the purchase, a hundred and fifty thousand we secured and funding to help us pay for that. We were awarded. Three or four months ago, but the contract finally came through from the state after that. So now we're all locked in for two years. To get the project done.
The work probably won't be done until.
Won't be done this year because we're, we're gonna miss the. The box culvert has an eight or nine month lead time and we can only do it until September. So. Army Corps has a time limit, so it'll be next year sometime. Twenty-four.
Um, I saw paving is commenced on the Sanborn Road.
Yep. And blue with North Hills then. Sanborn should have been done this morning. I, I don't think it's afternoon, but. Started it yesterday, finished it up this morning.
Been by Comston Hall, they done the.
We were estimating our fingers crossed Friday. They were doing, uh, that, that's a different company than the roads, but that company was over paving the road up to Oak Hill High School yesterday, so they're in this area, so hoping that will.
And what, what's next, uh? Off on through?
Yes. They may have gone in this afternoon, but, uh, I don't know.
Wasn't you my, I don't know.
The last thing will be. Road by the, the market up to the, up to the top.
Did you drive Sanborn Road and see how fast?
This can.
That'll be the next thing.
You're the downside, right?
Yeah. Um, so my questions for. Police chief. The splashing speed sign I was asked about. And I remember when. Uh, we had it before and I asked, um. Chief Paul Heron, when he was here about it, he said they didn't have a hitch on any of their new vehicles, so they couldn't tow it around. So I wanted to check in with Chief, uh, Ferland about that and find out because. With instances like the new roads being paved, it'll be a good reminder that you shouldn't be going eighty-five, um. Yeah, uh. And, and if the two new. Uh, or the two SUV cruisers that we have don't have hitches, I would assume that. A, um, public works vehicle, whether the Jeep. Or somebody has a hitch. Or have one put on. So I wanted to check in about that. And then my second question is, they put the flags up and they're all new flags and they look wonderful and the new poles. But I knew that the welcome to Monmouth or the Monmouth signs we had with Comston on them and different things had a lot of broken poles. So I wanted to check in on those and find out. For the summer.
Yep, um, um, last I knew before Lori went on vacation, she was working on a new. A new piece of vinyl for those and all the equipment, so she, she's always kind of been the one that's.
Oh, got that, okay, perfect, okay.
She's working on it.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that, you know, originally I think economic development had gotten those. Banners, right? So, so those were my two questions.
No, I thought you were probably gonna say something about that. The splash in twenty-five.
Oh, those are new, yeah. Oh, no, right here by the school is the new school ones are new.
Right, and they're, that's amazing, they. Clock your speed and, uh.
Cause that's what I really wanted for.
Yeah, for downtown.
For downtown.
Yeah.
Not those smaller twenty-five mile an hour signs that were.
I don't understand why they were. Were small.
Yeah.
Uh. Whoever got them.
It wasn't what I envisioned.
Yeah.
Maybe able to incorporate those, those registered speed signs when, when Main Street is redone, because it would be part of the. Be part of the crosswalks and all that. You, you can get all that signage usually as part of that process through. Through M dot, we may have to pay for those add-ons, but.
Yeah.
Um.
I think that's.
That would be the idea, it'd be to enhance pedestrian safety along the street. You can add that stuff. It's all legitimate expenses.
Yeah. Yeah.
These up here are amazing.
Yeah.
They're really flashing, they tell you speed right away and, uh.
Yeah. Yeah. When did they put those up? Last week?
Just this week, about Tuesday, Tuesday after tomorrow.
Ah. Yeah.
Okay, um. Like border boards?
And those questions, so.
All right, Justin, are you gonna speak to the? The new US Supreme Court?
Oh, well, there's a, there's a, I put a, I put a note, I put a note from MMA thus far, it's in, in your piles of paper there that's in front of you. See, um. They just kind of, they're basically just cautioning at the moment because they're not, nobody's sure really what to do is that. We should not move forward with sales. The, the lien process is still valid, but they're cautioning selling any property until the legislature takes action. So that, that's basically what they're saying. It was kind of gonna put a halt to our whole profit. Unfortunately. There, there, there is an LD that they were gonna carry over LD one-on-one, which was gonna do just this anyway. It was gonna. It was gonna, uh, return excess proceeds and. My guess is that they'll just fall back on that because it's already in the hopper. They were gonna carry it forward because MMA perennially opposes that bill along with all the tax collectors and. Um, all kinds of other people, so it's a, it's a perennial bill that always gets killed. So they carry it forward because of this case and then. But now they have a vehicle to fix it, I think. They want to.
Yeah, I read the decision. It was written by. The Chief Justice. Sites of Maine case. Or, or statute, I think, from eighteen forty-six that seemed to say. That Maine doesn't feed the excess funds. I, he, he might have had the decision written by Cat GBD, so. I couldn't find the citation.
The lowdown is that the minute, that Minnesota case that I mentioned where you. Town keeps the excess proceeds, it's, it's been found unconstitutional, it's violation of the Takings Clause. So. If we keep processing. The sales like this, we'll have to keep track of our costs and then deduct those some, some way that the legislature will determine. And return. The money to those people that we can find. Obviously, the one on Wilson Pond Road, there is no money to give money to, so that would be a different situation, I think. You know, I'm not an attorney, but it kind of, kind of read that if the property is. Officially abandoned, that, that wouldn't apply, but we'd have to, there's probably gonna be some. Some statutory framework to determine that or.
Maybe they'll go to the abandoned property fund.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
If they can.
If they can find. Yep.
So, um. Abandoned property fund. Uh, for instance. They publish periodically, you know, in the newspapers, it says, um, and, and so like. People lose track of money and it gets put into that fund. The state, uh, is allowed to keep the interest that it generates. But, uh. They don't, uh. They don't spend the money. They try to find somebody.
Yeah. Always a lot of money in there, so you should always look on some, sometimes it's like old health savings accounts that you left a job and forgot about it. It was fifty bucks in it. You didn't think anything of it. And it just sits there.
One thing I was wondering is, uh. If I could be, uh, quite a member of the, the. Building Committee for the. New, uh, new building.
So we had, um, um, an original committee member that hasn't been very active in coming to the meetings and, um. Doug made a request and he comes to all the meetings. And we normally have a quorum, but, uh, I take one time we haven't had a quorum, um, but, um. Doug asked and everybody was for it on the committee, so. Um. I think we just appointed before. That's what we reviewed the, the, like we're doing tonight with Joel's, the application. We review, you know, we took applications for people. I don't know if. I think, I think we know Doug's. You know, past history on committees. We don't need to do an application.
Do you know if the commit, i- i- does the, I, I can't remember the. The framework you set up, is there, is there opportunity for multiple? Select board members that then you could just.
End up being just a public and I would stay the select word.
So if, if he's, if he's not gonna fill the select board role, I would just recommend just, just to keep it formal that I formally put it on the next agenda and then you guys take care of it that way.
And that we were gonna be at the next meeting and the building committee.
I'll, I'll add that.
Okay. So.
I went to Public Works today and took pictures of those. Stars and stuff and that, that I posted that and I put it on Facebook.
Yeah.
So it's out there.
I, I've actually talked with a couple of people that had some interest in it, so we, we may be able to actually. Get a little form rather than, rather than scrapping them.
Yeah. That's something that they, they can be used by somebody. I mean, I reached out to. Like Blanchard and he's like, well, I, I don't have any way to convert him and I don't have any room for some big pieces.
Yep. Well, that's good to know.
That is good to know.
Anything else, select board?
Uh, the only other thing I had, I wanna remind everybody to get on their, uh. Uh, email and sign warrants and payroll stuff as they come up. I got a message last week, it's like, can you jump on and sign? Because we only have two and. Uh, nobody's gonna get paid this week.
Hmm.
So I got on in time, but, um. You know, I, I guess it's important. I don't get the notifications on my phone. I have to remember to pick up the computer and get on the app, but.
Yeah.
noted for the record, I'm a terrible offender on that. Um, uh, the Economic Development Committee had a chance to meet, uh, just after our last select board meeting, so. Forget that, too, and then we're gonna talk about the cabin masters, uh. Done approving branches, so.
Um, I think you're gonna go into this. I haven't handled that yet because I put so much paper in front of you, but.
No worries, so, uh. We've taken a look at, um. Potential, uh, survey to distribute to townspeople when they vote on June. Is it June? Well, is the date, is the? Or?
Yeah, thirteen, thirteen.
We're voting on the thirteen.
Thirteen, okay, so, uh, this should be distributed on paper. Uh, for that time when everyone's coming together, people can or. Not, uh, answer the survey and then we'd also distribute it electronically, uh, via Facebook. And, uh, essentially it's, uh, uh, just wanting to quantify folks' attitude toward, uh. Potentially opting in. For, uh, various types of, uh, cannabis, uh, uh. Opportunities for the town. And it doesn't necessarily mean a retail store, it could be something as simple as. Allowing folks to cultivate. Cannabis. Uh, or allowing existing cultivators, the ones that already. Uh, exist in town. We heard from them at the last meeting. Uh, the potential for expanding their business to make it simpler or to do additional cultivation. So, um, so we came, uh, came up with this survey, which, uh, we felt was kind of a. Uh, an objective way of asking folks. What they wanted us to do, um, whether they wanted to see an ordinance or not. And, uh, we're hoping that, uh. Uh, at our next meeting, we might have some tabulation to share, uh, with the select board.
Anything else from the select board? Uh. And next is public comment.
Thankfully, I'm a part of what Kent just added and talking about is Facebook. How do you know this is Facebook? Is there any chance that there could be a page on the town's website? The surveys, surveys or notices could be. Created or posted.
Um, I don't know the limitations of the free Survey Monkey because I've never used it before. I don't know if anybody else is more familiar. Certainly, we could put that, a link to that on there. I just don't know if, what's on this paper is.
So, yeah, if we're gonna create a. Facebook. Link? I don't know, maybe that's a Lori question because I think she's done some of the survey work in the past.
Okay, I'll ask her. I just don't know how that works. I'm not familiar with it.
You don't necessarily have to. Log into Facebook, have a profile on Facebook in order to see Facebook. So it may be possible that you just.
You don't know which group on Facebook, find it on.
Right, so, so what you could do, and again, this is a Lori thing, and I think it's a great idea, Joel, uh, is to just put a link to wherever it exists on Facebook. Onto the town website.
But I think, you know, why take it to Facebook? That's what drives me crazy about people doing stuff on Facebook. You know, having a paper survey that somebody could pick up or having, you know, a link to the survey, which might be possible in. Between Lori and Dennis, figure out, you know, if that's possible to, to have a survey, because.
Survey Monkey does offer, like, like those, those services, they do offer surveys, it's just, I'm not sure the way. They're usually limited in like how many questions and the way you can phrase them. They usually have to be like yes, no, instead of multiple choice, things like that, so I'm just not sure. I'm not, I'm ignorant of, of its capability if we did a, if we did a free version like that, but.
Yeah.
We can find out.
Yeah, I'm not saying it can't be done. I just don't know. I can't.
And I think once it's created by Survey Monkey, if that's the initial. Vehicle for the survey, then it can be distributed. Anywhere, right?
Right.
Via email, via Facebook, via.
Link on the.
Instagram, via whatever.
Link on the town website, so.
Yeah.
Will it just be a paper copy like at the library or town office?
Uh, we're expecting to have a paper copy at the town office and at, uh, the voting place.
Yeah, this is the paper one that's. Uh, I think Reagan made up, so this is. This is what you'll see at the polling place.
Submit for polling.
My, yeah, right, because this isn't the word though.
And then we'll, we'll gather all the various. Sponsors and. Combine them together to come up with a total. And is it gonna be perfectly scientific? No. But will it give us at least an idea of what folks' attitude is toward this and whether or not we should be. Thinking about making changes, yeah.
Here, or whatever it might be.
Sure. Sure.
Yes, you.
A couple of things, um. A remark, remark to what Ken just talked about the survey. I know that was probably instituted from a meeting or two ago and helpful when you're asked about ordinance and so forth. And I just wanna put out that of the four thousand plus people, I'm gonna educatedly guess, or. Always that most of it do not want to see retail, so we just wanted to reiterate that, that. So if they're making medicine like Johnson and Johnson makes aspirin, I don't think most people have a problem with medicine that makes people better, but, um. It's not. Johnson and Johnson deal and it's just like. Recreational, um, that's not what Monmouth's about and it's one of us feel that way. I just wanna put that out there. Um, the second thing is, we talked about culverts and bridges lately. And, uh, I'd like to go back in history down to South Monmouth and then the Carver Road. AKA Hype's Road. There, there's a lot of homes that have been added to that more Carver portion since the bridge was. Closed. It came from. Twenty-year member of an ambulance service in the past, doing almost fifty-year member of local department, it's a long way around the mall, right? So I know it costs money, you don't want to add to the tax base right now, but I would hope that it would be. Reappearing on the radar, I don't mind here. Just wanted to put that out. That came to mind as we've been talking about people broke and. Log and other places.
I know there's been some talk about, uh. Roads that maybe shouldn't be town roads. And that, that the. The, uh, stretch of Carver Road that goes out to one, one twenty-six. Is more like a camp road really for the people who live down there. I'm sure they'd be upset if we said, uh. If we decided through all of what you have to go through. To stop it from being a town road because it doesn't read meet, uh, specifications really that. Uh, and I don't know how. Got to be a town road, uh. When people live down, uh, in Tacoma, like Chipmunk Lane. And there's so many. Taxpayers there and we. We don't. Take care of th- those, that road, uh, those roads that are in that area. And, uh. And yet, well, like, uh. Grover Street downtown by. The town road. We have to maintain that bridge. It would be, uh. Yeah, it would be a big deal to. Uh, the people probably who live at the, down there and use that bridge would be terribly upset if we said, oh, it's not gonna be a town road anymore. And there's another road up here, the, uh.
Sampson Road. Sampson Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's really, I think there's two houses on it, maybe. Houston, the Scots used to live there, but, and, uh. Uh. You know, probably shouldn't be, uh, considered town road. They shouldn't have their, essentially their driveway plowed. Uh, by the town.
Used to come up on the Packer and Shepherd's. Historically, how that ended up being. That used to walk right through.
Really?
That's part of a road from eighteen twenty-one, was established between Wales and five minutes commerce came through here.
Oh, so it used to go down, it used to continue from the, uh. Tacker Road.
Went around the backside of the lake onto the Ridge Road because you used to be able to, there was a road there of water levels. Yeah. One year after the state domain came, the state that road was established. But I wrote, used to be a road, not anymore. But I think as far as the Carver Road goes, it's not really, I, I understand the Chipmunk Lane aspect, but it's really been built up and it's. Any road is potentially deserving, as the future rolls along, I would think that road would be on the radar and, um. Well, like what we just dig down to on the Packer Road, I'm not saying I do that tomorrow, I'm just saying over, over time, but I think the bridge would be good to reestablish.
Yeah.
Believe it's eight point two miles down to Chipmunk Lane to respond to somebody in need, so. Again, that's a ride.
Yes.
The people I need.
Yeah, when I was a police officer. Road was still in use. And you go over the bridge, and I know that if I was messing around down, uh, you know, by Town Farm Road or, uh. Get above lane, I wanted to get back, I had to get back to town real quick. That was the ideal way, you didn't have to. Yeah.
A long way around.
Yeah.
Just drive fire trucks over and, I can't really go on the bridge.
Yeah, I'm sure. How, how do the folks in that neighborhood feel about the potential of that bridge being reestablished?
You know, we'd have to ask them, but I've always heard a lot of disappointment from anybody that remarked on it. Wish I was still open, wish it was still open. Never heard. I want, I play friends with Queens down, I've never heard anybody say I'm glad that's closed. There's quite a lot of, I wish that was still there.
Is it passable by a snowmobile?
It is. That's.
Maybe.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked at, underneath them like. I was actually, it looks like a. I'm not sure why it was closed. I'm not an engineer. It gives the appearance of a question mark why it was closed. Pretty sturdy for something that was closed, I thought. Not an engineer.
Well, I'd be curious to know. Of the residents in that neighborhood. How many are. In favor of having a throughway?
Right.
Uh, because that might increase traffic and some folks have grown accustomed to it being too, you know, dead end street.
Or you think that'd be a good idea to question anybody that's a Euro resident now?
Yeah.
That's totally new atmosphere and personality on that little Carver portion. Before it was woods and. They're in, older, it's almost just a path through the woods. Now it's really residential. there were buildings, almost just like a path through the woods. Now it's really residential almost.
Well, some of that might be due to the fact that it's a dead end street and, you know, people appreciate their privacy and.
But we don't maintain that now, do we?
We do.
We do plow it now?
Yeah.
And the, the plow has to turn around and supposed to go in all the way through. I can't, I, yeah.
Is that where the new truck went off the road this winter?
Uh, I think it did.
Yeah, slid off the road, yeah.
So they plow it, old things.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just wanted to F Y I, this is so many.
I haven't driven down that road since they closed the bridge, because you can't go anywhere, and I'm not going to visit anybody, so. But we, we use that road all the time to go to Heidi's and get an ice cream, so. To Lintonia. Did you remember this Heidi's?
No.
Shelly?
No.
Yeah, it was.
I'm, I'm sure Herb could tell us why it was.
Yeah.
That was under his leadership, so.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure he was right on the top of it.
Probably.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I remember as a kid during the conversation. People, people, people wanted to avoid the cost of maintenance on that bridge. I think it was part of the, it, uh, it might have been part of the package deal where they handed off the wagon bridge to the state. I don't know if you guys remember that time, but it was, there were two bridges, and they one of them involved having to make significant repairs to the wagon bridge, and then the state took it over. And uh, uh, and then the other was this Harvard Road Bridge where they just said, okay, one, two, two one-way streets, all good.
Any other public comment? Thank you. Uh, next is to consider appointing Joe, Joel Bollano Stark to the Conservation Commission. Reappointing, not appointing, but re- reappoint.
I make a motion, we appoint, reappoint Joel Bollano Stark to the Conservation Commission.
Motion by Chris, a second by Joe to reappoint Joel Bollano Stark to the Conservation Commission. All those in favor? Thank you.
That was easy.
Thanks for, thanks for doing that.
Yes.
Oh. Next is to consider authorizing disposal of the twenty thirteen Ford Taurus Police Cruiser.
That is the police, the police chief's old car before he started driving around the Winthrop one. So he's current, he's currently having it all, um, he's having all the police stuff taken out of it. It's already in the shop for that to get done. Only you can dispose of town property. This is an unneeded cruiser at this point, and it needs, it's about beyond useful life, so, um. We do know of a, of a person who bought a beyond useful life cruiser from Winthrop for quite a lot of money there in Massachusetts. They refurbished him, I guess, and tell them again, so the chief's gonna reach out to them, hoping that we'll get the most money, but it will be, it'll be a sealed bid process to get rid of it.
Yeah, but to you to be able to use the, the through.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
When are we seeing that agreement?
The, the new town manager in Winthrop starts on June sixth, and I have a meeting with him on June seventh in the morning to start the contract negotiations, and I already have a draft that's with our council right now to work on that, that the chief's worked with me on, so be sometime after that.
And then, I mean, it's effective, he's doing it already, but all the major changes start in the new fiscal year.
Yes, basically, yeah.
Oh, I make a motion to authorize disposing the twenty thirteen Ford Forest Police Cruiser.
Second.
Those are the motion by Chris, second by, uh, Kent. Uh, to authorize the disposal of that twenty thirteen Ford Taurus cruiser, all those in favor? Uh, next is to consider a facade improvement grant application from Cabin Masters.
That's the Knowles lumberyard. You've noticed it that a lot. I, I don't, and you would do that, maybe you want to get the update on it?
Sure, the, the Economic Development Committee had a chance to take a look at the application. Um, and we had a, we had a long conversation about, uh, the application, because uh, they met all the criteria for, uh, being able to show that they had, uh, significant expenses uh, and that the match for those expenses, um, uh, met our criteria, fifty percent match, more, more than a fifty percent match. Um, some of the work had already been completed, and that was kind of our thing we needed to discuss. Um, some of the work had been done in-house by their own, uh, organization. And when we pointed that out to them, they said, okay, well, we'll just show you the materials cost. Materials cost was more than enough to substantiate the fifty percent match that would be part of a facade improvement grant. So ultimately, it came back to like, okay, we kind of put the cart before the horse. They did the work, and then they said, oh, by the way, will you reimburse us for the facade improvement, uh, uh, grant? And, uh, in the end, uh, it was the opinion of the committee, uh, unanimous opinion of the committee, that, uh, the Cabin Masters had really fulfilled the uh, the whole point of the facade improvement uh, program, which was to make significant improvements in sort of a dilapidated property that's pretty visible around town. And, uh, and so we, uh, support this application unanimously as the Economic Development Committee, even though there are some procedural issues with the application.
So I just want to confirm that, I guess I didn't think that two oh two was part of the Tiff District. I thought only downtown was, so.
That's correct, but for the facade improvement program, um, we don't, and we've had a track record of going beyond just the Tiff District in order to uh, give facade improvement, uh, grants. So for example, Jack Trapps has received a grant even though they're not in the Tiff District. The, the, the Tiff District, the geographic district that was, uh, established for, uh, in twenty thirteen is in direct reference to the Credit Enhancement Agreement Program, which is another element of the Tiff District. And if someone were to ask for a credit enhancement agreement where, um, they receive a subsidy for, uh, for their property taxes for a certain period of time, that is a hard and fast requirement that it be in the geography of all of the uh, parcels of land that are described in our Tiff, uh, uh, application. For the purpose of facade improvement, that is not a requirement.
Uh, and because I was told that the masons were told they couldn't get a facade improvement grant, because it stopped at Maple Street.
It was on the side of the zone. So does this open that for all businesses on two oh two?
It does. It opens it to all businesses in town. Uh, and the, not this decision, actually, the Jack Trapps decision definitely does that, and the masons, um, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, when they approached us about a facade improvement, it wasn't necessarily the location that was the disqualifying thing, it was the roof that was the problem. So, uh, for some reason, when we set up the facade improvement program back in twenty thirteen, roofs were excluded from, uh, a potential, you know, roofs visible from the road essentially were excluded. Um, we're correcting that problem with the language revisions that are being considered at our next election. So if, if that passes, and if we get all of the check boxes checked on the uh, form that we send off to the state, then, uh, at some point in the future, we would be able to say yes to any organization that comes to us with a request regarding a roof that is visible from the road, so it would be included in the facade, uh, perspective.
The Tiff statute is, is, is really interesting. If you look at it in the law, it's like very small. What the legislature did was they kicked all of the program rules to rulemaking. So as, as governors have changed and commissioners have changed, interpretations of those rules, those rules have been modified, so. And under some administrations, they really, they try to be very tight about what it's used for, and then in others, they kind of broaden it out over time. I do know that in the beginning, roofs were not even allowed to be incorporated in this. That may have been why it was in two thousand thirteen, I can't remember what year. But my understanding now is that that's now kind of, if you will, evolved, that now that that's, now that's considered a legitimate program expense, where before it wasn't. So this is kind of always kind of changing a little bit, depending on, you know, who's in charge at the, at the moment.
That's, that's, we couldn't do it back then. Can't do roofs.
In twenty thirteen.
Yeah, Apple Valley Bakery. They wanted an engineer roof.
Well, they may have been, they may, they may have also been limited by just the amount, right? The maximum amount for facade improvement grant is twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And that's what we're talking about today for, uh, the Cabin Masters, is a twelve thousand five hundred dollar.
That is yearly thing? Or is that a one-time?
I don't know. I'd have to, I, I don't, I, I, I have to read the document.
That would take the money fast, if people did it repeatedly, you know.
Well, I'm sure this is going to be an ongoing thing.
Yeah.
Um, with that property, because I know it included like signage and stuff, and they could be putting up signs and but we've had problems trying to find the home for the money in the past. The, the house just keeps building, so.
When we talked to, um, when Reagan and I met with them, we talked to them, and we said, if you, if you guys have a comprehensive development plan, and you know what you're doing down there, then come back and talk to us, because that, that would be an opportunity to have a discussion about whether you wanted to create another Tiff or whether you wanted to portal some of the money from this one to that one, so it wouldn't just be facade. At that point, they could start talking to us about, um, credit enhancement agreement and all that, but we kind of, we tried to say, it's really on how big of a project that you're willing to put over there. If, if you're gonna, if you're gonna legitimately create jobs and a storefront and all that, then that's something that we want to talk to you about, certainly. But if it's just kind of a warehousing thing, and it's, it's just going to be you guys going in and out, that's not really purpose of the program, and then it's going to be, you know, the board's going to think long and hard about whether that's worth account investment, but, um.
And of course, it's a, this, every facade improvement grant is at the discretion of the select board.
Yes.
We're, we're the authority in terms of what is reasonable and what is not. So if someone repeatedly came back and said, oh, how about this, you know, then, then we could say, hmm.
No, and they're, they're still maintaining the fact that they're just doing, um, they're, they're, they're running their construction outfit out of that and possibly, uh, a store for diamond items, or they said they had some possibilities, but seems like they're putting an awful lot of money, you know, they spent forty five thousand dollars on the park a lot, and they're going to pave it. Um, and they're not planning to really make something happen there.
Well, they haven't, they haven't approached us with a, you know, a, a comprehensive plan.
Right.
Um, and what they we've, we've, that was actually one of the questions that we had when we considered this application. Was like, are they in compliance with code enforcement, and, uh, do, do we need to see more detail? And we actually asked Justin to send our code enforcement person down there to, you know, sort of get a good sense of where they stand, and, uh, uh, he seemed satisfied that at this stage, um, they're not, they're in compliance with everything that the town requires of a business that's not changing the use of the building. So at some point, perhaps that threshold will be passed. Um, uh, but it's certainly a reasonable question to ask, and we've done our due diligence to say, okay, we've, at this stage, looked at it and so far, so good.
I, I think it's a great thing for the town. I think we should do everything we can to help them bring business to town.
Well, and that was, uh, that was kind of the, the, on the Economic Development Committee, that was the attitude that won the day, was like, uh, they're, they're, they've already done some work, and now they're asking for reimbursement. Uh, and maybe that's not exactly the right thing that we had in mind in terms of an application process, but nonetheless, uh, what they've done is improving the appearance of the town at a highly traveled um, uh, throughway, and, and that's certainly what the facade improvement program was intended to accomplish, so. So.
Has the town attorney, or do they have any reason to look at this? I mean, if we're going to approve something, um, we want to make sure we're on the, the right side of the legal aspect, where as it does say in the rules, that you're supposed to apply for the, fill out the application first. Um, I don't, just don't know if there's any legal, you know, are we approving something that we shouldn't be approving?
I think our exposure with that, we're not violating anything other than the rules that the committee and you all have set up, so. Um, it's not like the town voted for that process, so there, there isn't anything that's there. It's just kind of you guys just kind of saying, well, the application was supposed to be in here first, but uh, do better next time. I mean, I think that's clearly within your authority. Um, when we were talking about some of these changes about where to go, Reagan did did talk to our Tiff attorney, which is a different attorney than the regular town. They work in the same firm, but it's a different person that focuses on this type of stuff and.
And they weren't, they weren't alarmed and said, don't do this.
No, they weren't.
They call that nuke pro tonk.
There we go.
Nuke pro tonk. You, you have to eat something. Pretend it happened two months ago.
I don't want jazz album yet.
Yeah, and I just didn't want to set a precedence that people go and, you know, do a bunch of stuff and then go, huh, wow. Maybe I'll fill out an application and try to get some of that money back.
Yeah, this is the kind of stuff you lawyers do. Uh, I, at the, uh, and I'm, uh, an open house, the museum at Reagan's there. And, uh, I talked to her, and she was talking about, uh, changing the Tiff to be uh, or to consider the center of town an arts district.
So there are a couple of initiatives that the Economic Development Committee is thinking about with regard to Tiff districts. Um, and, uh, I, I think you, you may, we may be prepared to come forward to the select board uh, in time for the November election to look at, uh, the potential of creating a Tiff District on two oh two for the, the purpose of incentivizing better, or, you know, uh, more, a more comprehensive plan uh, for, for that area of town. Um, a, a second idea that's come up, and as we have uh, learned more about the process of creating Tiff districts is the potential for the downtown area to qualify as an arts district, um, which would be a third Tiff district. And an arts district has the advantage of, uh, overcoming some of the problems that we had with Chief Roy, who was interested in acquiring that parcel of land on the corner of Pleasant Street and, and Main Street. Because he had, you know, i- i- if that goes through, he has to sort of negotiate directly with the property owner and form his own separate uh, nonprofit organization and have separate, you know, administration of that that nonprofit could then apply to the town to, to, you know, uh, to, to use a facade improvement, uh, program or something else, uh, to make improvements to the property, but there's a lot of hoops to jump through, uh, for, for what is essentially going to be a park. And the advantage of an arts district, that's a type of Tiff entity, if the town were to create it, um, we wouldn't have to jump through those hoops, that we could then, uh, use Tiff money directly to acquire property for the purpose of establishing a park. directly to acquire property for the purpose of establishing a park. And, um, and it would just become a more simple process.
Uh. But this, you said that the, that the TIF business is constantly, constantly evolving depending on like who is the administrator or would, would.
I don't want to give you the impression that it's just kind of like really, no, it doesn't, it doesn't change that drastically. I just mean it like the definitions that are in the rules sometimes get tweaked a little bit so that they can kind of just expand around the edges. It's not like the rulemaking kind of goes crazy because there's, there's a lot of interest in that and it impacts a lot of things, right? Cause when you're, when you're, when you're shielding property from state valuation, you're basically taking revenue sharing and school subsidy from your neighbors. So everybody's very interested, like the municipalities have their feel in it, the consultants. Everybody kind of has their, their hands in this watch very closely. It's not like it, it, it changes drastically. It's just that sometimes around the edges, for example, like, well, facade can't be a roof. Well, I can see the roof from the street. And over time, people are, well, the roof's ugly, but you gave me the money to do the front. How come I couldn't put the, the gutters and stuff on to make it look nice? So you can see how that just kind of, there's a little bit of creep like that. It's not the whole thing changes.
That's kind of a major thing. You, you could put a roof on. No, no, you can't put a roof on. I mean, that's.
Yep. But, but the program, I mean, the legislature has tweaked the laws too over everything. You know, in the beginning, you couldn't use TIF monies to pay for any municipal public infrastructure at all. And now they've included a certain amount of public safety. So you can build, you can use, I think up to like thirty percent for fire stations. If you can prove that the development that's being built in town has an impact on your public safety capacity. So say, uh, for example, like in Bath, when they built the Ultra Hall, the big buildings that they could build the ships indoors. They allowed certain expenses to incur on the town side because the town now needed a ladder truck that it never needed before. They could go a hundred and something feet. So they thought, so the legislature has amended the rules over time to try to accommodate some of these things. Cause I think that's probably a legitimate expense. You're expanding an economic development activity in town and no one really thought of that. But now the town has to have a truck that it doesn't need otherwise. So they kind of looked at it as, well, okay, that, 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 I suppose is a legitimate. So things like that have changed over time, but yeah.
Really, ooh, to be taking stuff away, like we started arts district and they say, no, no, you can't, can't do that.
No, because the arts district is a category that the legislature created, just like they, they created like arts district tips and then they had municipal development. Um, municipal retention tips, they had economic development to it. These are all legislative created things. The rulemaking, uh, gets to what the definitions are and how you apply for each of those programs. So like an art district if, uh, somebody would have to decide at the legislature at some point that that was an illegitimate, uh, program. We, uh, would basically qualify for that. Not just because the museum is down there, I think, but I think it's because the museum is there and we have Compton Hall, which is something that uh, completely legitimizes sort of combining those things together. Cause you have, you have a, you have a true theater there where things are happening. And then you have a museum that's also in that area. And I think you could make a case, this is a legitimate arts district under what the idea was for the law. It would be hard to do if Compton wasn't there. I would tell you, I think that that would be a very hard lift if that hall wasn't there to, to just do it for the museum to buy this thing. I don't think that would fly, but I think uh, Reagan had a good idea and she kind of ran it up the flagpole, the stage. And I think it was kind of, yeah, well, we think that would make sense. So it's an idea. And I think that the, the, the ECO Devo Committee has to kind of work through what that would look like. And that's kind of their, their wheelhouse. And then they bring your proposal sometime when they were ready, right? Same care.
Yeah, I think the idea that's probably furthest downward road and probably next to come to, uh, you know, to, to ripeness is probably this idea of the two O two uh, TIF. And then once, once we're through that and have, have gotten something ready for the voters, then I think we would uh, spend some time on an arts district. And underst- firmly, firmly understanding what the advantages are, uh, for the town.
You know, I think that, have the cabin masters have started to work down there, haven't they?
No, it was the same guys that Mary had worked with the takedown of Ben. They were back there putting the metal roof that they'd already taken off back on. It was the same guys.
They're working inside, dude.
I don't know what's going on inside. I just saw them on top of the roof, so.
That's Brad, that's Brad Barker.
Yes. Yeah.
So, uh, for all, oh, we have to consider the.
So, so essentially we're just looking at twelve fifty, uh, twelve five, right?
That's correct.
Twelve thousand five hundred, the maximum amount.
The maximum amount, and they have provided us the documentation that shows that, uh, even when we exclude, uh, any labor costs, um, the twelve thousand five hundred still represents a fifty percent, a request for a fifty percent match for materials that they have, uh, clearly demonstrated.
Yeah, I think the O N P aside doors there. I think we're more than that. We're, we're almost twelve thousand just from the door.
Yeah.
Believe in some, you know, patio doors are crazy.
Well, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the grant application for the facade improvement in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, uh, for the cabin masters on, on Route two O two.
I'll second that.
So that has made a motion, Mark has seconded it to, uh, approve a twelve thousand five hundred dollar facade improvement grant. Action from cabin masters, all those in favor? Thank you.
Next is Lawrence number twenty four. Uh, Blue Rock, Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport and Transportation, two thousand five hundred and sixty four dollars. Boy and King, uh, the North Monmouth Water Main Extension Consultant, four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Electronic Systems and Software Printing and Copying for the Election, four thousand nine hundred and twenty eight dollars. Baby and Oil Heating Fuel, two thousand eight hundred and forty eight. Lance Auto and Truck Repair, uh, that's the, uh, work that the fire chief mentioned in his memo, one thousand four hundred and ninety four. Um, Occupational Health Centers, Medical Exams, one thousand two hundred dollars. State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, twenty thousand five hundred and one for a total of fifty five thousand two hundred and sixty two dollars and forty two cents.
I make a motion, we approve warrants number twenty four for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three.
Okay.
Well, Chris has made a motion.
No school bell, I know.
Chris has made a motion, Mark has seconded it to approve the warrant number twenty four for fiscal year twenty two. Make sure, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Will, uh, Casey be coming?
Yes, if I can ever get him to sign the final version. I still don't have the final version. I emailed him the other day. He said, oh yeah, I just saw my list. It's done. I mean, the one I shared with you is, is what it is. There's nothing to do. It's just he has to, the person who does the work can't sign it. Casey has to sign it. So it's just, I think it's probably in his inbox or ones he has to approve. I don't know if he's read it all yet.
Mr. Chair, before we go to adjournment, I think we have some additional public comments.
Yeah, well, we're here to discuss another matter, um, code violation that we feel that the town is not enforcing. So. There's, uh, we live on Carbon Sea Lake, one O seven Kennebec Drive. Have a hundred and fifty seven feet of waterfrontage. State Shore Land Zoning Ordinance says you can only have one dock for two hundred feet. So we've had a dock on our property for fifty years. When we bought the property, we allowed in Eastman. Well, the guy that owned the house that we bought it from, he built that back. In turn, Eastman said he could have a dock on his property. But the state says he can't. So basically state law overrules, um, what he is saying he can have a dock. It's not me telling him he can't have a dock. Your code enforcement, Matthew Durost, I think it is Durost.
The old one.
Yeah. Couple of years ago or something. Um, you know, he's the one that brought it to our attention that Mr. Lemay could not have the dock on the property. Now, ours we're looking for is the town enforce the state law. We have spent quite a bit of money on attorney fees and going back and forth with the town with Mr. Lemay that has the dock on there. We just spent a bunch of money on our attorney. He walked into a old Maine Supreme Court case that is very similar to our case. Because Mr. Lemay says we can't have a dock. He can have a dock. That's not true. We've had a dock here for fifteen years. So I'm just looking for the town to find the guys. Why can't we stop fining him? And I got letters from a year ago and O V said he can't have a dock. Justin will tell you, they've told him, don't put your dock in. What's he do? He puts the dock in. What am I supposed to do?
And I'll, I, I can't, I can't talk about some of the details here. We can, I can put it on your next meeting in an executive session because this is in council at this point. Um, but the basics are, which I, I can share because they're all out there. The, uh, the, he does have a notice of violation. He's not supposed to put the dock in. Dickinson's called me the other day and said that, or Friday and said, was it Friday? Okay. And he put, he put the dock back in. So obviously, w- w- we, Andy works on Mondays and Wednesdays. So he, he came in today. I think he drove down it today on his way out of town to document that the dock was back in. You say it's there. I haven't gone down to look. So, but he was going to go down there to look today. Uh, the, the crux of the matter is that our attorneys, he has other violations, which you're aware of, about his property setback violations and all kinds of things. That our town attorney and his attorney are currently in negotiations about how to settle all of these disputes. This is not helpful, him putting the dock back in, which is in violation of the, of the notice of violation. Basically flaunting it. However, um, at some point, if we, if we, if we can't get, uh, the issue resolved, it will come to you because as soon as we start um, sending fines, it becomes a civil violation, which then the town is either going to have to defend in court to enforce because he doesn't, we don't have a mechanism. We can't send it. There's no code enforcement police to go down there and yank the dock out. So the only, the only, uh, recourse, if we can't come to some kind of a settlement is to basically take him to court. And towns, at that point, you will have a, a, a choice over that as, as our town council will, will say to you, if you want to hear or say it to you and your own is code issues, I have this, uh, code enforcement as the same leeway that a, that a district attorney does with prosecutorial discretion. So you as the, as the executives of the town, you get to decide which issues you want to pursue and which ones you don't. So for example, if some, if the corner of someone's house is two feet, you quote the property line and you don't feel like spending twenty five thousand dollars in legal fees to get them to cut that corner off, you, you have that choice. Like you do not have to enforce these things. So when we get to the point where I would bring fines and stuff to you, that would be when we've exhausted all of our opportunities to settle this amongst the parties though. And I do understand their frustration because this has been going on a long time, but that is where we are right now. I can't share. I can't share anymore of the, of the, of the discussion between the parties. Cause that's, that's that will leave.
The thing is, what I understand from talking to the state is town has to enforce state codes, state laws. Sure. And this is a shoreline zoning issue.
It is.
It's right in there.
It's a, it's a state law. It's not a municipal ordinance. Right. We copy the state laws. Our ordinance says the same thing.
Yeah.
But if you call the state, have them enforce their own rules, they say, we're not doing it.
Okay.
So D E P has basically thrown their hands up and said, that's up to you. They don't care. Um, probably. I don't want to say they don't care, but they don't want to get involved is what I want to say. Um.
The, the second thing is he had a stop work order placed on his house over there. I personally watched him take it off and rip it up. Now I was under the impression that that was not supposed to be removed from the property.
Yep, that is true.
So and that is, and this is another thing I've heard, that's an arrestable offense.
It could be.
Okay. So what I'm saying to you is as a town of Monmouth, um, this guy basically continually, um, resists all orders. He doesn't obey what the laws are. And we spend our money on it. You know, it's just the town should enforce the maximum penalty against him. That's what I'm asking, I guess. That's why we came tonight. We just, you know, we just want to put this thing to bed. And the only thing he's going to listen to is fines, money.
It's more than just being a scoff law. Do you have, you have a civil lawyer? Is there a civil suit pending?
I have an attorney, Elliot Epstein out of Williston.
Yeah.
And he's very knowledgeable with Eastman and, and, you know, he's done a lot of research for us.
You also have Mary Dannison.
Mary Dannison, they're both good, too. So, you know. We just got a spec.
If you would like to be briefed on the status of where we are, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I can schedule an executive session with the town's council if you, if you want that at your next meeting. Or if you want to wait for us to see if something's going to work. I mean, they, they are talking. They're going back and forth right now regularly.
But it's costing you money. It's costing the town money and I'm a taxpayer here and you know, the only way the town's going to get their money back is to find the guy from the way I see it. Okay. And as a taxpayer, I want my money back. Because we shouldn't have to be fighting something that is law. So.
There's probably about seven disputes going on around three houses down there. Just, just so you know, it's not just the, the dock is what his concern is. The next, the neighbor on the other side has a, they all have concerns with each other. So it's, I'm, I'm just, I want you to know it's a not a straightforward dock issue. It's, it's stuff all over the place. And it all revolves around the killer three or four houses.
But it's just all revolves around this one guy.
Yeah. Well, and, and there's also on the other side of that street is his house. That's the person, the next one on this side. Yeah. I, I guess you could say that. But they all have different issues.
With him.
Mostly. There's other people down there that are disputing with themselves too. So they have nothing to do with why he's here.
I mean, he, he put a well on somebody else's property, um, you know, out of the house is, if it's not on somebody else's property, it's within inches of somebody else's property. Um, you know, I contend that, that the septic system isn't legal with setbacks. He's got a shed that's not within setbacks. The wet, you know, I don't know where he's going to put the well. It's got to be sixty feet from the septic. It's only a hundred by a hundred. So, I mean, you know, he's got a lot of issues, but when he tears off something that's not supposed to be torn off the building and they go, I got videos and they're doing full bore work in there. And what's the town doing? We call and nobody does anything, Justin. I mean, it's.
That is not true. That's not true. He is, the code officer has been down there and spoken to them.
And, and.
And I can't discuss the details because it's, but the, it's, it's an attorney issue at this point.
But we were told, Justin, by you and by code, that if he was to put the dock in to call you immediately and he's going to start, cause he's going to start getting, um, fines.
He potentially could. Yes.
That's what we were told.
Yeah.
That is not happening. And the dock, you know.
He's even got a ladder, uh, that I know of, that I've seen.
So we were told.
He's in violation again.
Again.
Come here and.
I have told both of you on multiple occasions, I do not have the power to enforce the code laws in this town. I'm not the code enforcement officer. The code officer is working with the town attorney to the best of their, and you also know, we've been through four, four code officers since you, since you've started, since you had started. And it's. And it's, it's progressing as fast as it possibly can. And I know that you are frustrated. But I, I can't, I can't get into the details of what's going on in the, in a public. Issue like this. We'd be putting the town legally at jeopardy for any, any negotiations that are going on. We could potentially get sued. So I'm not, I'm not doing that here. It's irresponsible.
I just wanted.
This board wants to, wants to have an executive session. I'm happy to set that up. So you have all, all of the facts. Be perfectly honest. I was trying to keep you out of it as long as I could until we could either find a resolution or not. But i- i- if you are all interested in knowing that, I'm, I'm happy to have the town attorney come to your next meeting in an executive session and you can. And then you can decide what you want to do.
Do we have to remain a, a part of, not a part of?
When we, when we fine according to the ordinance, you, you have to be consulted and approved of that because it basically triggers legal action. Because we will have to defend those fines in court. So you're basically acknowledging at that point that you want to put the town in a position where we're liable for enforcing. That, that's going to cost money. So that's kind of the issue. That's kind of what triggers it. So the code officer can't invoke fines for these things unless he gets dealt with you first.
I think a judge can do the finding, is this right?
The town can find, but the judge has to, has to enforce those if he refuses to pay, right? Is that, that the best way to say it, Joe?
A hundred dollars a day or something.
Or something. Yeah, it could be.
Do we have money budgeted to enforce?
Oh, we have a general legal, um, line in the budget.
Oh, should, should we have here an executive session, uh?
It's up to you if you want to get involved at this point. If not.
But should we get involved?
If we are in negotiations, I would rather, you know. Try to solve it before we get to the point of having to spend more money.
And we are not negotiating with him per se. He, he has hired his own legal counsel who. It works for, uh, pretty flirty. So he doesn't have, he has somebody that knows what he's doing too. So. Kind of, everybody's kind of, uh, positioning at this point, trying to figure out the way to solve the problem.
But this, but. If this guy is doing all this stuff, his attorney must be aware of that. He's, um, doing all this illegal.
I would love to answer you Doug, but I'm not going to.
Yeah. Yeah.
I will, if you have another meeting and, and you know, but it's just. We have to be careful because if we do end up getting into, it's basically filing a lawsuit against somebody and we can't give away our, our hand before we do that.
So, yeah, I, I, it seems to me like we've got some questions. Um, and we'd like to get some answers from the town manager, but doing that on the public record is probably not. A wise thing and, and the long-term interest of the town. So maybe, maybe scheduling an executive session for the next. Next time we meet so that we can have a conversation with the town's attorney, even though that's going to cost us, I don't know, what are they billing these days?
Two fifty?
Sure. So, but, but this is not the first time that we've heard. Some controversy from the Kennebec Drive neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and maybe it's time that we at least educate ourselves as the select board. Um, you know, where we stand and what. I mean, I, I think we all are interested in, uh, seeing justice served. For the sake of the law, but also for the sake of taxpayers who. Don't want to have to pay more than they have to.
And, and I agree with you on that. I mean. Taxpayers are going to get stuck with the bill. The lawyer's bill for the town. So why wouldn't you go after the guy to get their money back?
And you feel we should do, have this executive session? As Chris suggested. Not waiting until, uh. I don't know how long it's going to take for them to agree.
Is it too long? Actively moving ahead or should, should we do it?
To be perfectly honest, right now that's the, the biggest, the bigger, this isn't going to make them happy, but the bigger concern is the other violations that he has at the moment. More than the dock. So that's, that's not what they're here for. But right now the, most of the, most of the discussion is around his other violations.
But is it true, Justin, he doesn't want to talk about? It's kind of what you told me the other day that he doesn't want to talk about the house. Infractions. He just wants to talk about the dock.
Yes, when he comes into my office, I can say that that's what he wants to talk about. It's the dock. His attorney is, is concerned about the other things.
I don't know, but it's just a dock. What? It's some, you know, what makes it, uh, worse than somebody just sticking it out on? Anything?
You know, he's done a lot of damage down there on my property with the heavy equipment. I mean, it's a state law. Just like.
Pass and reach us.
It's a state law. I mean, you can't do certain things.
Oh, is your dock out already?
My dock is on my, is on.
There are two, two docks.
Two docks.
And there should only be one.
There can only be one. You know, unless the state changes the, uh, shore land zoning, they adopted this in twenty sixteen. And, you know, they're not going to change it. I mean, that's what I have talked to the D E P about.
So would it make sense to have it in two weeks or in four weeks? What, where would we have the most information that you could impart to us?
If you probably skipped over your next one, did the one after that, I think we, we would probably be in a position at that point where either. There isn't going to be a resolution or there is. That would be my guess.
So why don't we, that makes sense to, yeah, do it in four weeks, have an executive session. Not on the fourteenth, but the. Twenty eight.
Yep, something like that.
Who, who's allowed to participate in the, uh, the executive session?
Only us.
Whoever you want to include, but then they're, they're included. So if you, if you want the code officer, you can be part of it too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good day.
Thanks for coming.
Make a motion, re-adjourn.
I'll second.